It is 7:00 PM. Welcome to the City of Manistee Planning Commission meeting for April 6, 2023. Please rise for the plan.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please take a roll.
Commissioner Slawinski?
Here.
Commissioner Simanski?
Here.
Commissioner Weiner?
Here.
Commissioner Mamberto?
Here.
Commissioner McBride?
Here.
Commissioner Yoder?
Here.
Chair Whitliff?
Here. Thank you. Approval of agenda, it's time the Planning Commission can take action to approve the April 6, 2023 agenda. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Mick, second.
She said Nancy said. I do have an amendment to propose to the agenda. Under new business, a potential upcoming zoning amendment for HGC sign guidelines, and I can explain that in more detail when we get to that item.
How would we write that in? What is it called?
I wrote it in as just zoning amendment, HGC side, sign guidelines.
Okay, I cancel guide. Okay. Okay, so, is there a motion to approve the amended, right?
Yeah, we need a motion to approve the amended.
Amended agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by?
Zoning amendment for sign guides.
Okay, by Mick, second.
Second.
Roger?
I'll second, or whoever.
Any discussion? None, please take roll.
Commissioner Slawinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Simanski?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mamberto?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Chair Whitliff?
Yes, thank you.
And do I move to approval of the agenda then? Uh huh.
Or would, it's?
No.
It is.
Yep.
All right. Conflict of interest, is there any commissioner with any type of conflict on tonight's agenda?
Oh, yeah, right, conflict, yeah.
None, Roger?
Hello? No, I'm good.
Okay.
I just stopped.
None? Approval of minutes, Planning Commission can take action to approve the March 2, 2023 meeting minutes and March 9, 2023 work session meeting minutes. Motion by Bob, second.
I'll second it.
By Marlene, any further discussion?
I believe it was Mick had pointed out, or someone had pointed out to me, just a minor amendment to the, the minutes from the regular meeting, Jeff McCula. We have Mike McCula.
Oh, that, yeah, I see that. That's just a, a, their name.
Okay. Hang on.
Okay. So, we take a motion to the amended?
Yep.
Okay. Motion by Bob, second.
I'll second.
By Pam, discussion? None, please take roll.
Commissioner Slawinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Simanski?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mamberto?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Chair Whitliff?
Yes, thank you. Correspondents?
None.
None, okay. Blight and Neighborhood Restoration and Beautification Commission, presentation by Chief Glass, Lucas Richardson.
Yeah, I did talk to them both about coming. It was a couple weeks ago when I talked to Chief Glass, and then they were both on vacation when I emailed them. They followed back at the beginning of the week, and we didn't have staff meeting this week, so I think it may have slipped their minds.
Okay.
But I will look to get either one of them, or both of them, on an upcoming agenda. I know that, I had talked to Lindsay McIntyre at the Housing Commission, I believe she's committed to coming next month, but maybe, I think Lucas with the Neighborhood Restoration and Beautification Commission could be a good one, that's someone we haven't really seen, so I'll talk to him about coming in a future meeting.
He's probably still on Percy Street working right now, probably.
Yeah.
Is he kind of still working?
Oh, okay, yeah, so he might be literally out there right now. Yeah.
Okay. So we'll bypass that.
Public comments on agenda-related items?
Is there anyone in the greater public that has a comment on tonight's agenda? If so, please come to the podium, name and address, please. None? Okay. New business, 1,000 Oak Street Dumpster Waiver Request.
100.
100.
100, Mark.
I'm sorry.
Mark, you're just too much fiberglass, huh?
It was, yes. Neil Thireen.
Yeah, so we have Dennis here, the property owner of 100 Oak Street. He, I had contacted him, I actually, with the remaining dumpsters that were not enclosed, I had issued probably 10 tickets to those that did not, were not in compliance. Ultimately, all of those tickets were dismissed because everyone had contacted me, applied for a land use permit, or requested to come before the Planning Commission. This is, actually, I believe, there's only a couple more that I'm working with to truly, you know, coming into compliance, but this is one of our remaining dumpsters. And Dennis, express, well, I, I'll let you come to the podium, and you can kind of explain your situation here.
You issued 10 of these citations, and let me say for the record, I've been a landlord for 53 years in this town, and I take offense to you slapping something on my front door, only to get a call from one of my tenants, like we're running some kind of a Skid Row operation. I don't like that.
All right.
It's unprofessional.
We appreciate that.
And not only that, I've had this, with this ticket shows PO Box 403, I've had that same box for 53 years also. And needless to say, I'm not happy about this. If, if 10 tickets were issued, I took a drive around on the 17th of March and counted between 40 and 45 violations, and if you like, I can provide you with those, I won't bore you with them now. This piece of property is 132 feet on the front, 187 feet deep. The building that's on it is 80 by 50, fronting Oak Street. The canopy is 80 by 20, and it's 205 feet from the center of Oak Street to the back lot. And, as you can see, if you like, I do have some pictures here, although it's up there, so it's not me. I may approach.
Sure.
I didn't take a lot of copies, because I don't want to waste a lot of money.
Well, Dennis.
Was this the same thing, Dennis?
Yep.
I guess it's, well, no, this is a schematic, the scale, of where that dumpster is.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Where do you share that?
As I said, it's 205 feet from the center of Oak Street to the, to the rear edge of that property.
Uh huh.
As you can see, the canopy shields it from the, what would be from the north, there's a, railroad ties that run from Oak Street all the way back to the west line where the canopy is, and then they go, they go north from there, and there's also a white plastic fence that hides that dumpster from the neighbor's property, which is in far worse shape than ours. So my, my point being that, I, I consider this as selective enforcement, I don't, I don't know why 10 of us, if that was the number, were chosen, when there's certainly plenty of violations, including the school system. Fab Light, the gas plant, you name it, they're on my list, and as I said, I will give you that. Last year, in August, I spent $1,861 to have a concrete pad put under that dumpster, because it was crushed rock, and I did it more for the tenants, because all of our people, a good many of them in that building are elderly, that historically has been, kind of, the rich old ladies live there. That, that is changing as, as the times go on. We, we still have an original tenant from, we've owned this building about five years now, and we still have one of the original tenants. So, I, I don't, I cannot see why, if you, if you have to crane your neck and look back 205 feet, why any more, I guess camouflage, whatever you want to call it, is necessary. One of the problems, and we were fortunate to get Republic to drive into that, because they normally don't like to go into a residential situation like this, it's 21 feet from the edge of the railroad ties to the building, so by the time the truck gets in there, gets a hold of the dumpster and dumps it, it, it's a little bit of a struggle, and he has to back out, he cannot turn around into the parking lot. The other problem we have is in the wintertime, that's very tight, when we have to bring the plow in to make that sharp angle, as it is, they got to drop the plow, drag that forward, so if we have to put up some kind of a fence, or a barrier, or facade, whatever it is, it's going to be a royal pain. So, like I say, we take pride in our properties, I, I just, it matter, believe me, that ticket just drive me nuts. I could care less about the money spent to, to improve the properties. We have, by the way, where you see that red car parked there, that was, that, we added that because we only had room for eight cars in the back, that is an eight-unit building, so there was no off-street parking for guests, or people that were coming to service the building. So we do spend money on our property, and we take care of it, we have no garbage laying around, we don't have any junk pickup trucks, cars, or any other debris, and like I say, I, I am really taken back by this, and it burns me up. So, that's my presentation.
Sir, can I ask a question?
Certainly.
Did you receive notification about the new dumpster policy?
We may have. I do have, I do have some correspondence here that dated, to tell you the truth, I don't have any recollection of where them came from, there's no address on them, so, but it does say something, this one was dated April 7, 2022, basically saying that there was an ordinance and so forth. My problem with this, if we're going to, if we're going to enforce the ordinance, let's do it uniformly, let's do it for everyone. Why, why should 10 of us be singled out? And I don't know if this is retribution, or if it's selective enforcement, but I don't like it.
But, but I'll be honest, sir, and if I could speak.
Go ahead.
Is, we've been trying, since before COVID, to address the dumpster issues based on numerous complaints from residents. Not going to point out that it was anybody that was complaining about your dumpster. However, when we got those complaints, we discovered that Manistee had an ordinance about dumpsters that required everything that you received, okay? That it had to be on, basically, on a concrete pad, or a non-eruvious surface, it had to be enclosed. That was in existence for many, many years, was not enforced. However, what we did was, we didn't want, first of all, we didn't, since it had not been enforced for so long, we didn't want to quickly go out, so we gave at least a year, if I'm not mistaken.
Almost two years.
And then we extended it another year because of COVID, because we didn't want to impact. So, the planning office has been, I think, has been very conservative, and we are now onesie-twosies trying to address it. We've had many people come in front of the council, asking for permission, like you are now, prior to receiving a ticket. So some of those places that you may have on your list, may not qualify, they may meet the standards already, or they've already come to us. I can name at least a half a dozen who have already come to this, and said, you know, look, the, the, Pioneer, or not Pioneer, um.
Republic.
Republic, can't get their truck in, and, and there's no way to be able to deliver, and we say, okay. There's only been, there's really, all of this started with the people that you were addressing, that were truly negligent, who had no care for their neighbors, had no concern at all about pests, et cetera. And we have, I think, tried to be as fair and honest, and have tried to universally treat this over the last couple of years. So, I just wanted to let you know that you were not being singled out, that we've been trying to do this meticulously, without being offensive, but after a couple of years, you have to start singling the people out who have never responded back to the ordinance letters that had been sent.
But you have, sir, you have, you have institutions, like, go, go by Jefferson School tonight on, at, on Maple, two of them sitting right there in broad daylight. You go down to Fab Light, there's three huge dumpsters sitting there on an angle, plus a dumpster. You go across the street to the, to the sour gas plant, they have one sitting there. So, I, I guess, to me, it feels like, as an individual landlord, myself, and, and I don't know who else got, I, I know that there, there were, like you say, 10, 10 or so issued, but why us? My properties, and all you people probably have been by them a dozen times or more in, in the last 10 years, we, our stuff is well-maintained, we allow, I don't put up with anything. And this dumpster is so far back off the road, you can barely see it. And it's enclosed, actually, on three sides, by the railroad ties this high, and then the other fence that high, and the canopy, and if you look from the, if you look from the, and you can't see it on your picture, but look at this one, if you look at from the corner, all you see is the, the structure, and there, there's just, you know, that, that, so, as far as I'm concerned, we've, we've done it. Everything that I could do, including pouring the slab, to try to, and by the way, before, there were eight of those totes or garbage cans, half of them were laying in the street most of the time.
Yeah.
The other half, like you say, we have all elderly ladies living in that building, they can't, they can't pull that tote from 200 feet out to the road, and then, even if they did that, then it would sit there till next week. So as far as I'm concerned, this, this is an improvement. But, you know, if, if we're forced to put the, some kind of a gate on, I can guarantee it'll be ripped off probably within the year, either by the plow or by the Republic people, and, and it'll just be some more money spent. By the way, last year, just to give you an idea of why I get a little excited about this, we, we spent in taxes last year, $34,890 bucks. So I, I feel that not only do we contribute to the, to the, I guess, well-being of Manistee, but we pay a lot of taxes for the privilege.
So, sir, before you go, are you requesting then of us, that you receive a waiver?
Yes, sir.
Having a front gate?
Yes, sir. Because as far as I'm concerned, it's, it's as hidden as it needs to be, on a reasonable scale. Because that, you know, I mean, hey, we've spent money before foolishly, we can spend it again, but is it going to, what's it going to amount? I would rather put it in, in some landscaping or something.
Now, we, we do appreciate, the city appreciates the way you keep your properties, Dennis.
Yeah.
You do a good job.
Well, like I say, I've been, I've been doing this a long time, and now my son has taken over, he's been doing it, and, and he's kind of more fastidious than I am, so, and the reason he didn't come tonight, he didn't want to end up in jail. Short fuse.
So what you're, what are you asking of the commission?
To waiver anything else, we've done all weekend there.
Yeah.
I mean, it does not need a gate, or some kind of a, because you can hardly see it from the road.
Did you, did you by chance talk to Republic about this?
I have not talked to Republic, well, other than the fact that I know that, because I talked to the drivers when we'd been on the property, when they come to hook onto that thing, and get it in the truck, and it's just, it's very tight back there. That, where it sits, by the way, is 14 feet from the, from the railroad ties to where that gray post is right there. And so by the time they get the nose of that truck with those forks in there, they have all they want to do, and it is, the dumpster is back as far as it goes. So right now, it's 205 feet pushed up against the railroad ties from the road, from the center of the road.
I want to ask you a question, do you have a fine maintenance person on the premises, or who maintains?
No, we have, we have 26 buildings, ma'am, so we have, we have one full-time employee, actually, he's a contract employee, but, and then my son, who works full-time, and I do the paperwork, so.
Can I ask of Katie? What exactly does the ordinance, how does it read?
Yeah, so the ordinance language itself, and I, I do want to provide some clarity on enforcement and what that regulation entails, so with the, how I mentioned 10 tickets issued, those were remaining property owners who had not responded to the two correspondence that we had set out, notifying those with dumpsters that we would be looking to enforce. Understanding that tickets would not be received well, I was very much willing to dismiss those tickets if people contacted, contacted me within the prescribed amount of time, and were working towards compliance, so that is what happened in this instance as well. But the regulation itself reads that any dumpster that's visible from a public roadway shall be enclosed on four sides with a, equipped with a lockable gate, on a hard surface, but that regulation can be waived by the zoning administrator if it's not visible from the public roadway, and then can be waived by the Planning Commission when full compliance cannot be accomplished. And I think, given the, the reasons that have been provided with snow removal and such, and the other dumpsters we have waived, that it would be appropriate, if that's the way the commission wants to go with this one, but ultimately, that is up to you guys.
Dennis, if I may ask, is there a reason you didn't contact the planning department?
Well, depending, when I got it, I either may have been in Florida, I've been in Florida all winter, I, I don't know when it came. We, my wife and I travel a lot, like I say, I'm the paperwork guy, it could have got, quite honestly, what I do, I have a box that, when I go to the post office, I throw the mail in the box, and I, I, let's face it, checks are open first, bills second, and then the rest of the correspondence is open when I get around to it. By the way, I just found in section 506 of this, under section D, it says, the, it, it gives you a, if the dumpster is not detrimental because of its size or location of the proposed, that can be waived.
Yep.
All right, and that's, that's what you're asking?
Yes, under section 508, or.
506.
506, I'm sorry, D, paragraph D.
Any other questions for Mr. Scare?
Thank you.
No.
Roger, you don't have any?
No, it's pretty straightforward.
Okay.
I'm okay with it.
All right. Mr. Scare is asking for a waiver request?
Yeah.
So is a motion.
I'll make the motion.
I've driven by there so many times, I didn't even know where there was a dumpster back there.
Me either.
Yeah.
Until you start looking through our photos, that's when you start finding them.
Yeah.
I knew this was a dumpster, that's, that's one of those.
I have to agree with that.
I'll make the motion to grant the waiver.
Okay, motion by Shelley, second.
I'll second it.
By Roger, further discussion?
Like I said, the only thing that I had already addressed was, I, I think that the planning office was doing their true diligence, you were not being singled out.
No, no.
We sent those notices out, and the people who responded, like I said, we wouldn't have had the issue if we would have had a response. So, I just wanted to make that really clear, that I think that they have done their due diligence.
Right.
Trying to provide this, and we tried to be as reasonable as we can, but we still need to try to, to clean up neighborhoods, and clean up areas that really are in dire needs.
Right.
And I think they've done a pretty good job of, of moving forward with this through difficult issues. The, the first people that we had to, to actually get to be in compliance was the city of Manistee.
Yeah.
So, we didn't do anything until we got our city straight.
I, I saw the working out.
Okay, so that would have been a clue, so, all right, thank you.
And Chair, if I may, oh, go ahead.
There's other places we're still looking at.
Absolutely.
That we haven't.
Well, and that's, that's what I wanted to add, there are, actually, a lot of properties with dumpsters that have applied for a dumpster enclosure, and have issued land use permit for that, but the land use permits are good for one year, so that's another kind of grace that the city has been giving, in the planning department has been giving to these property owners, understanding that we're still coming out of material shortages, and people looking for contractors and such. So I would appreciate if you do have any that you have come to your attention, and I can verify if they pulled a permit or not, but I believe that.
Sure.
Yeah, yeah, if you have it, and, and you found those, then I would appreciate that. But, most of them are under permit, and I just wanted to provide that clarity, that even though we see some dumpsters in the coming year, they will all be, you know, required to be enclosed at the expiration of those permits.
Thank you, Katie.
Mm-hmm.
Any further discussion on this? None, please take roll.
Commissioner Slawinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Simanski?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mamberto?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Chair Whitliff?
Yes. Your waiver has been granted.
Granted. Sure.
Next, you shared management policy correspondence.
Chair, if you'd like to go back on the agenda, we actually do have Lucas here tonight, to talk with you guys about the Neighborhood Restoration and Beautification Commission, I appreciate you for coming.
Yeah, sorry for being late, I'm working pretty hard on South Lake Shore Drive. I'm sure you all have seen that construction going on.
I thought you were on Quincy.
Yeah, not on Quincy, no, that's somebody else, so. Yeah, I don't know, was there a specific?
No. Just kind of what you guys do, what you guys do, any current projects you've been working on, just kind of a brief overview, I'm not sure how familiar any of you are with this committee, so, yeah, just the basics, and some questions, yeah.
So, I, I know some of you, but not all of you, but, so I'm Lucas Richardson, I, I live at 389 Seventh Street here in town, one of the city engineers for Spicer Group. I'm also the chair of the Neighborhood Restoration and Beautification Commission, and also on the board with Mr. Slawinski, I'm the Manistee Saints, played for the Saints for this year, it's my 11th year, so, big Manistee County guy. So, yeah, so, to, to, to talk about our commission, fairly new commission, I presented on our annual update back, I think in February, to the city council, and we were made in, I think, March, March or April of '22. Our commission is based on a lot of blight issues that the city has gone through, and the city police department has taken into their hands to do blight enforcement, and we're there not to do blight enforcement, but to help with some of the cases where, you know, a volunteer project can, can step in and help out somebody that is in need, or finding funding sources for those who need it, that, that kind of support for the police department that they might need some help with. So, our commission's made of five people, one of them being Mayor Sullivan, as vice chair. And last year, what we did was a lot of education, because as you all know, it takes a little bit of time to, to learn what you're supposed to be doing, right? And we're still going through that a little bit. And then also, education about the community, you know, where, where we have problems with blight and restoration, and where the police department actually needs help from us. And last year, we had a community service day, where we gathered some volunteers, and we cleaned up the sidewalk going down First Street between Oak, actually, right down the, the hill from Mr. Scare's building there. We cleaned up that whole walkway, it was not traversable, you couldn't even see the sidewalk, and the whole retaining wall there was all moldy and mossy, and it was really dirty, and with the intention that maybe in the future, someone, or maybe us, tries to organize like a mural or something on that wall, just to beautify that area. Another project, last year that we did, there's a homeowner that, her husband passed away from COVID, and she's a, a nurse, and a single mom, obviously, and, and she works all the time, and her yard had blight issues, and wasn't able to maintain her landscaping, so we basically gave her whole lawn a makeover for that, and, and cleaned up some of her onsite blight. So, those are kind of the, the projects that we kind of target. Actually, upcoming on May 4, we're going to clean up the whole block around Casman Academy, so if anybody knows anybody that wants to volunteer, or if you yourself want to volunteer, Katie has my information, or you can get with me after the meeting. But yeah, so, we organize community service days, that's one part of it, I know another part of what you wanted on the agenda was blight enforcement and stuff.
You don't really have to get into that, yeah.
But I, I don't get into too much of that. So that's, I guess, pretty much, pretty much all, I was going through my presentation here, I can, I guess, express my, or our commission members' goals, so, a couple of them we've already done, so I'll skip over there, over those, but, you know, we really want to try to develop programs for residents in town to be able to know about these types of groups, you know, we have volunteer groups everywhere. know about these types of groups. You know, we have volunteer groups everywhere, right? There's probably ten of them. You could list in town. But how do we make that successful and make it so people that don't know about us, for example, know how to reach out to us to, you know, get that help? So that's a big, it's a big task trying to figure that out. And so we're trying to push, you know, certain things that are gonna help reduce blight and also try to develop these programs that, you know, help those in need. We want to definitely reduce the workload off the police department. That's a big task that that we always try to, you know, ask Chief Glass what what we can do to help him. And also, we've really pushed that bulk item pickup. If you're unaware, every first trash pickup of the month.
Or first week?
Yeah.
First week?
First week, yeah, of the month. Republic goes around and picks up bulk items that you can't fit in your trash can. And that's really, really helped over the last few years of seeing all that trash on the side of the road.
Right.
So we try to push that out on social media, you know, it goes out in the tax newsletter. We want to try to keep pushing that and I think it it really helps. And then also the city just created this this app that you can have on your phone and I think even on your websites are called See Click Fix. And it's where you can go around. And if you see something that is a city issue, sometimes they help out with if it's not a city issue, at least connecting you to the person that needs to be connected to, like consumers or something. But what you do is you take a picture of it, you report it on the app, you put a location down, and then it gets pushed to the appropriate department in the city. And so we're trying to educate people on that because I'm seeing some faces that are like, wow, I've never heard of that. So and that's the whole point, right? So, you know, you go around, walk, walk your dog and you say, oh, wow, that fence looks really dangerous and it's laying across the road. Snap, oh, Parks Department, we didn't know about that. Let's go go and fix that, you know? So on the blight end too, you know, maybe an officer doesn't see, you know, this blight that's happening and it really needs to be addressed or it's dangerous.
Yes, yeah.
People can go around and take pictures of that, too.
Do you have a question, Mark, if I could? Then how do you, that was my question. How do you determine who has blight? Do you do you or the police department?
Police Department is is the blight enforcement.
Yeah, but who spots it is what I'm saying. Who finds it or?
Well.
Somebody go looking for it or?
No, well, the the police department is looking for it.
Oh.
There's seven or eight districts, I believe, in town where officers are dedicated to that district and they're hundred percent focused on that. But what I was just saying is like, that was an example of what a normal, you know, citizen could report. You know, hey, just making sure this is getting taken care of and it would get pushed to the police department. And the police department would be like, yep, thanks for reporting, you know, we're taking care of this with the homeowner. Or, you know, maybe you did find something they missed, you know, so.
Yeah.
It's just an avenue to
What is that app?
It's called See Click Fix.
S E E or C?
S E E.
It's on the city webpage.
Yep. S E E C L I C K F I X.
We got an issue right there on Davis Street. But Bush is over the sidewalk, but I would think I'm out, you have to walk over.
It's a big district, and I guarantee this would be the response from the the blight enforcement officer. Big discrepancy between ugly and blight. And all of us have a different view on what ugly is, right?
Right.
And so something like that, you know, if it's like overgrown vegetation over the sidewalk.
Right.
You know, that would probably be a perfect avenue for our commission to say, hey, let's go clean up that area.
Right.
Because the whole objective of of our commission to help with the blight, you know, if you clean up a sidewalk, that might not seem like, okay, that's not the biggest deal, right? But then, hey, the neighbor just edged a sidewalk and cleaned up the overhanging brush. It's very contagious. And so is blight. Blight is so contagious, too. So and so is blight remediation, right? So that's the objective, cleaning up neighborhoods, let that domino effect happen and and just
Yeah.
Keep it moving. We're never gonna solve everything, but.
No, 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 but it's a good idea that we've got something started. I didn't realize we had anything like this before. So it's a good deal, I believe.
It's kind of like years ago when Manistee had the Tuesday Committee.
Tuesday Committee, exactly.
And that that's, I've always wanted to see if that could happen again. And it with your committee. It is.
It'd be really cool if neighbors could be good neighbors instead of anonymously sending you through an app first.
And I totally get that, too. Right, yeah.
A lot of these people have been cleaned up. And within three or four months, it looks just like it did before.
And and that's the problem. We can't we you can't get down to the root cause. I mean, we're not social workers. We can't solve the world's economic crises and you know, it's it's just about addressing the things that we see.
I had a question. There were so many houses that were starting to be worked on. None of them ever pulled a permit. Then they got red things on stop work orders. And it's been almost two years and it's still sitting there with those red things on it. What is being done about all those?
Yeah, so that would probably be a better question for Chief Glass. But I do know that all of the situations that you're talking about, where there has been blight enforcement, you see some movement and you're like, wow, this is good. This is getting a lot probably had to do with COVID and supplies and, you know, everybody started to panic with, you know, everything going on with money and
And on Davis, I've gone to St. Joe's Church, you tore a house down and it's just sitting there, that lot.
Yeah.
And it's
So I can touch on that, actually.
Ball, everything, that's a hot mess.
Yeah, so so one thing that the city's working through right now is is making sure that there's the demolition policy is met. Because in that case, the contractor came in, boom, boom, you know, cleaned up half it, half of it and then left. And then, you know, the city's left with this lot that looks horrible, probably worse than it did before. So what the city manager, Chief Glass, and then our commission and the county land bank, the city building inspector, Safe Belt. I think that's everybody. All we we got together as a group and we actually applied for a $200,000 blight remediation grant through the state of Michigan. And the land bank received that. And there's a house on Kuszyusko Street down by twelfth.
Kuzhyusko.
Kuzhyusko.
It's Kuszyusko.
Kuzhyusko.
Kuzhyusko.
I hear some different Polish people say you might ought to get into a room, paddle out.
But that
Talking about those.
Yeah.
I'm referring to is not only a blight issue, it's a safety issue.
Right, so that house down there, which is the corner of Tenth and Kuzhyusko. And Davis Street. And I think there's a third or a fourth one, too. All of that is lumped into that grant and they're all gonna get demoed, cleared out to be a buildable site and then potentially in the future be built by either the the city developer or the land bank, so.
Yeah, who would that then refer to, that particular lot, to the?
To the land bank. The land bank owns that property.
Land bank, okay.
The, actually, the city owns, the city owns the the one on Kuzhyusko.
But won't they
Have to transfer it.
In order for the demo.
They'll own it for like, I think, six months. They, it might not even actually be six months under this funding that you have, but that's generally they'll buy it and then
They'll be able to sell.
Yeah, they'll deed it back, yeah.
Okay.
I know they haven't even talked about, because the land bank has never had one, from what I understand in this area, in X amount of years, but the land bank was actually talking about developing it themselves, too. So that's a possibility, I don't know. But but that is that is taken care of in that, so that's really good to see that. And I know there's a couple of fire houses last year that finally got demoed. And so there's really good movement on demolition, but everything costs a lot of money. You know, how do we spend, you know, our taxpayer dollars on just demolition of private houses that just got blighted? You know, it's it's a really tough situation.
The one on Kuzhyusko has been a fight for a long time.
Yeah.
Long time.
Tarp garage door and tarp windows.
It's a mess.
Yeah. It's not great.
Yeah, good idea.
Yeah, it's
Yeah. Any other questions?
No, just great job, I just bidding, by the way.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Just keep beautifying Manistee, so nice to see.
I will try my best.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Well, that was refreshing, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was.
Bang straight. All right, well, now we'll move to the Viewshed Management Policy Correspondence. And I think we know what this is about.
I think so.
So I didn't really put together a memo for this one for you guys. This was requested to put on the agenda because I know there's been some discussion among members of potentially writing a correspondence to the, I don't know if we would probably send it right to the tree commission or maybe city council in opposition of this. So I just put the the Viewshed Management Policy before you all for review. And if there's some key points, if you guys do decide that you would like to pen a letter on behalf of the planning commission, I could take some notes and get something together for you guys and have Mark sign it and we could send that off. But I will leave that discussion and decision up to the commission as to whether you guys would like to pursue this.
What do you think?
I think it's a bad idea. It was a bad idea the last time.
Yeah, I thought it was.
No, about a letter.
Absolutely. And and this, there are so many loopholes in this. And I, this is Pandora's box, okay? There's there's no no addressing of distance. So I can have, I can be, you know, I live on Fifth Street. Well, you know, for my roof, I could see the lake if those damn houses weren't in the way.
Yeah, but windows watching.
I think that, you know, or those trees. So I mean, there's there's no, there's no diff there's nothing that really makes it
Definite.
Reasonable. I mean, anybody, anybody can, you know, I can, you know, and again, and I understand we're really addressing public property. However, once you set that precedence, then what's to stop somebody saying, well, you know, if the golf course didn't have all those trees, I'd have a better view. And you've got ten houses. Well, there and there's nothing to address what came first. Right? The in the in the view line. So that's a big thing for me is, you know, I've been here for a hundred years and now you're telling me I have to cut down my tree, right? Or on the beach, wait a minute, this was here before you built your property, so I'm sorry, you know? But that doesn't, it's not addressed. There's nothing that says that if 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 you truly had your, and then all of a sudden things started growing up, I get it. But that's not what's defined here. It's really gives everybody an opportunity to say, I don't like that.
I've looked at the old aerial photos from back in the fifty, or the sixties and seventies. And some of these people are saying they got, we lost their view. They never had it. There was, there was dunes there.
Absolutely.
Trees there, everything else. And when stuff got developed and everything, that's when those trees disappeared. That's when they got a little bit of a view. So there's a precedent back in history from the sixties and seventies. They never had a view in the first place there.
This can be interpreted in so many
Now, I can see within a certain amount of footage from the property, say like fifty to seventy five feet. But not a football field, football field and a half, like some of these ones that are coming through are.
Well, I thought we went through this a couple of months.
I object to is is how they made this a price issue. If I can afford to throw money at a view shed issue. But Joe Snuffy, who who's barely making ends meet and can't can't really deal with the rising prices of groceries, well, he's not gonna be able to to put his, you know, money into the game. You know, you have to have, you know, basically a lawyer and you gotta spend money upfront and you have to have all of these different financial things. So I I have some objection to how the it it's really designed for a not a a fair and reasonable addressing of the issues.
Or Snuffy work first.
Well, you know, there, like I said, I I just, overall, I I think that opening this up in our town, you know, again, with a hundred and fifty year history of not having a view shed issue. I think we're we're going to create problems that will linger for years and years.
I agree.
And the people who will be punished the most are the people who can least afford it.
Yes.
Yeah.
This, I think we all know, came from
Yes.
One party. That's trying to make a dollar.
Yep.
Yep.
Just, it's not, not good. I
No, not acceptable.
No, we shouldn't even entertain this.
But I I was the one that complained about the city council and the city manager not listening to our opinion. And Bill Gamble did ask for a letter of our opinion. So I definitely want a letter sent to the tree commission and to the city council and
I know how we feel.
About, yeah, I think we're all in agreement.
We're all in pretty much a
We should probably all sign the letter rather than
Okay.
Sure.
Yeah. I can get something drafted for you guys and then I'm just trying to think about it logistically. If, because I don't necessarily want to receive comments on the letter via email or anything, because I don't want it to appear that we're discussing things. I'm not, I'm honestly not sure when this was intended to go to council.
It, there was a April seventeenth is, I think the
Bill was wanting a letter by the tree commission's next meeting, which I think is the seventeenth.
Okay.
It's on Monday.
It is a Monday because that's when they meet.
Well, I guess if you're all comfortable with me drafting something that addresses the concerns expressed, then we could just take a motion that staff drafts a letter of opposition with the concerns expressed. And then maybe I'll just have like Mark review it for comments and then have you all sign. Does that sound appropriate?
Yep.
Okay.
The other thing I'd mention is the current policy already has addressed where if a tree is
Safe.
damaged or or has a problem, that's already in there that that it can be addressed. But just because I don't like it and and I I would prefer not to have that in my view.
Especially as a healthy tree and everything.
Yeah.
Katie, could you send it to all the commissioners? I I know it's a lot, but if we could set a specific date back. So we have all our comments rather than just one.
Yeah, I guess I could. I could send it individually to each of you and accept comments individually. I just want to be careful about sending something out like a mass email and having everyone. So I'll do, I'll do it that way. I'll get it. I'll get it done first thing next week and I'll send it to you each individually. And if there's anything that as individuals you would like added or removed, I can make those comments, get a final draft, and then everyone can come by my office and sign it once I have a final draft.
Does that work for everyone?
Yeah, I think I agree with that.
So is there a motion for?
I'm asking Katie to put forth a letter of expressing our concerns and that we're opposed to this.
Yeah.
Okay. Motion by Bob, second by Pam. Any further discussion? None? Please take your
Commissioner Slawinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Samanski?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mamberto?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Chair Whitliff?
Yes.
Thank you. Good one there. Zoning amendment next on sign guidelines, I think it is.
Yes, so this is in regards to the HGC sign signage guidelines, and we have been looking to amend those guidelines. I've been working with them the past couple of months on exempting certain temporary window signs and things like that in the HGC. But it did kind of spark the idea of, so the guidelines do, and I talked to George about this, they do kind of carry the same weight as the ordinance in a sense, that the HGC uses those guidelines and property owners there must adhere to those. So I would, I oppose to the HGC adding to the zoning ordinance just simply that signage requirements in the historic district subject to HGC guidelines to signage, kind of use the same language for the Article twenty one. And the, and this is within Article fifteen, which is the C three district, the only zoning district that contains the historic district. And then also under Article twenty one signs, adding under the subsection B to see HGC guidelines number two for signage exempt signs within the historic district. So it's kind of a simple amendment and the guidelines are more the bulk of what the HGC is looking to modify. But I figured that this would be helpful, especially because of the existing language for subsection B, that any sign wholly located that any sign wholly located within a building including window signs, and then except signs in the historic district that require the commission's approval, that kind of um, gives the idea that any sign in the historic district requires approval by that commission, which is mostly true, but the guidelines point to a number of exempt signs. So I felt it was most appropriate to have this right in the zoning ordinance. And uh, we had the historic district commission meeting yesterday and they took action to recommend that we bring this to the planning commission um, to hold a public hearing and recommend approval of this language to council. So at this time, I am asking for a motion to hold a public hearing on these amendments at our May meeting.
That's fair.
Is there a motion uh, for a public hearing?
Sure. I'll make a motion.
Say Roger, second. Nick, discussion?
I, I have a quick question. Um, right, that's section 2103, letter C, what type of flag are they talking about?
So, yes, I know. I, yeah, and I, that was one of my first questions when we first started really looking at this. My interpretation of flags up to 24 square, 24 square feet in area is that that is intended to be your typical open flag, four by six. And that is the consistent interpretation that I use for that regulation.
Just, that's what I, that's what I took it as.
Yes, yes.
Base here.
Thank you.
That's, that's, it could be 12 feet.
Right, no, I know. I kind of thought about that too. Um, yes. Feather flags are a different type of flag. I've, yes.
Hanging off of the building and all the way down.
Yeah, right.
No ideas, maybe.
I think I'll be pulling those downtown.
All right, uh, any other discussion on it? There's been a motion, please take roll. No further discussion, which I don't think there is.
Commissioner Slawinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Samanski?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Berto?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride? Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Chair Whitliff?
Yes. Old business zoning amendment Z23-01, feathered flags. Feathered or feathered?
Feathered.
Yeah, that's true.
So I put together a little memo for you guys, kind of detailing what the city building inspector's thoughts were, as well as the city engineer. They kind of had differing, differing thoughts, but I think they were both very good points. So um, other than anchoring the feather flags, the language is essentially finalized um, with that on your screen there. So I believe I captured everything that we had discussed from the work session. And then I just wanted to have some discussion about how you guys would like to see these anchored. And I think that the point about must be removed when wind speeds are more than 20 miles per hour, I think that could be a good thing to add in. And then maybe we don't have to worry so much about how they're anchored, um, that people could use your typical anchoring stakes where feasible, sandbags or the water bags were feasible, but that they must be removed when the wind speeds are that high. Because then we're kind of eliminating the, the reason why you would want something extra secure to the ground.
Is there a reason why the 20? I had just had a note to myself, why is that?
Um, I believe that is what Sean had called out from the article that
Kind of where the manufacturers are recommending.
Is it?
It's kind of a manufacturer recommending.
I, I just didn't know where the 20, because
Yeah.
You know, there's areas in Manassas, you'd never have that flag out. I mean
Yeah.
Yeah, true, if you're close to the water or whatnot.
Or around the river.
Yeah.
Things like that.
Yeah.
Prevailing winds are probably 15 and 20 miles an hour.
Mm-hmm.
I, I know we used to have feather flags at my office and 15 was rough.
Yeah.
Okay.
I bet you.
But by the time you add in the wind and the traffic, uh,
It adds up quick.
It adds up really quick, yeah.
So how are we going to resolve, and that was the other thing, so you have the building inspector saying that he recommends one and the other doesn't, so
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, I think that they both have good, I think either way, it's not going to hurt. I mean, with um, Kevin's comments on poking things in the ground, I mean, we're assuming that people are putting these on private property. If they need to call Ms. Dig, you, you need to call Ms. Dig when you're doing
Stuff they would interfere with, the anchorage of those things, they're not going to go deep enough with that stuff to bother it.
Okay.
That, you know, we're talking no more than a foot they're going down.
Right.
And the, the, other stuff they should be worried about are supposed to, by code, buried at least two to three, or not deeper
Yeah, that's a good point.
He's looking at irrigation, I mean, but it's on their own dime, but
Right.
If they pop a hose, so Yeah, they, you know, if it's a gas line, that's better, that's better be a problem with the gas company because they got it too close to surface.
Right.
You know.
Yeah, that is a good point. So in my mind, not being an engineer or a contractor or anything to that effect, I thought stakes would be more secure, but I don't know.
If you're on a sidewalk.
Right.
So.
Or it could be stakes where feasible, I don't know. I don't know how far we want to get into it with that.
Anchor, which is fine. And I could see where
Bag of sand is fine.
I see that so much, my lines of work, that by the time we're finding anything, we're down, we're down two, three feet before we hit anything.
It'd just be nice if the two subject matter experts could agree on how we
Right.
suggest, rather than having a diametrically opposed
Well, I've seen people, other building inspectors, they look at a plan and say, oh, there's lines here, here. They don't know how deep they are.
Right.
They don't, they don't have, the engineer has more of the knowledge of how deep they are supposed to be. You know, like, like I said, the water lines, that's the person's problem for putting through their own water line. You know, the sprinklers, but the city water is, it's got to be down below the frost line.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
So they're
You know, the only other thing is the telephone, I mean
And they're usually pretty good too.
By my house.
Yeah.
This much.
Some of the phone lines are pretty narrow though, but you're going to know where pretty much.
But again, if it's on their
Yeah, just there.
Yeah, that's true.
So could we go with both?
Yeah.
Appropriate, how about that?
Yeah, I mean, I can just list those, some of those typical anchoring, um, like with ground stakes, uh, a weighted
Yeah.
weighted mechanism that is typically utilized for this type of signage. Because I think a lot of them will come with, you know, it's like a whole little set, wherever you get them from, things.
Well, I'm sure they do, most of them do.
When you order them, they give you options of what type of base you want.
Right.
Okay, yeah.
And the people, when they order them, because we get, I get the same thing for my construction signs.
Yeah.
I have options, spring loaded, a weighted one, a tripod mounted one. It's, that's what you want to buy.
And some of these are obviously for indoor use. I mean, they're not even designed to be. I know at Manassas Chevrolet, they have a stake that they pound in, you know, beginning of the season. You know, it's about 14 inches.
Of course, that would be fire.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's still some, same lines.
Yeah, that's what I want to do. Okay.
A feathered flag, feather.
See that thing times.
Feather.
I can, and I refuse.
Feathered flag.
So the, uh, I know we have a sign ordinance that you can't be in city property with this, correct?
Yep, um, the, in accordance, the second sub-bullet to that, the in accordance with section 2101A2 is referencing the four foot setback required for signs. Up in the section.
I know the new AT&amp;T office, they have
I called them today.
Okay.
Yep. I did notice this as well.
It was better when they had them by their pillars next to the building.
Yeah, exactly.
No, though, they look, they look pretty good by next to the entrance.
But how could you tell? Because they're blue and the windows are blue and
Yeah.
You saw them moving a little bit by the building. And they drew you, drew you to the door.
I went to Katie because I went back to the senior center, I'm on the board there. It said we're not allowed to have these, and I know farmer's market puts them up when they're on the property and stuff. And I said, I want to clarify before we start enforcing or not enforcing on that. So she was grateful enough to come and explain it to the board.
We can request an exception, right? There's
Yeah.
No waiver.
Yeah.
For
For, for signs, for special events.
Yeah.
Yeah, for a temporary activity permit, but we also figured out that because the farmer's market's on private property, city council won't necessarily issue a temporary activity permit for them, so
Six months, it's not a one
Right, so we, I just told them that, you know, you're going to have to let the farmer's market know that it's not allowable. And they were okay with that.
Okay, very good.
There you go.
Any other questions? Roger?
No, I think we're all right.
Marlene?
Okay.
Shelley?
No.
Pam?
No, I just don't like the 20 mile an hour because I think 15 would be, after 15, it's going to be a problem.
And that's, I was going to ask for clarification if you wanted, if you guys wanted that language in there, to not exceed X, should be removed when um, exceeding X miles per hour.
I think we got to look also at some of these signs, if it's a smaller one, they're able to withstand the higher winds.
True.
So it's, some of the size of the signs will come into play.
So maybe that's why it was 20.
Yeah. Because you get some of these ones that are fairly, maybe three, four feet tall, they're going to take a lot more of a beating than these 12 or 15 foot ones.
Yes, that's the truth.
Yeah.
I don't know that, just from a, a, like enforcement and regulations standpoint, I don't know that we necessarily want to try to break it down. Maybe like a, you know, all or nothing, with the understanding that, you know, some people might be able, would be able to leave them out at higher speeds. But um, if we're going to put a, a wind mile per hour, I think we should just pick a good general number that you guys are comfortable with. Or we, we don't have to include that.
I wouldn't even know how fast the wind is blowing anyway.
I think 20 is probably reasonable.
Thing with, they do, a standard they do have kind of a little bit is when you look at the flags flying in the wind,
Uh huh.
How far the flag is flying out.
Right.
That gives you good, if the flag is flying flat, straight out, you put another stuff going. If the flag is just fluttering, you're fine.
The, I'm a sailor, so I deal with wind a lot. If a flag is straight out, you've got 15 mile an hour winds steady.
Okay.
And that, that's a rule of thumb and it's always works.
Uh huh.
And 15 mile an hours on those feather flags is a lot.
Yeah.
Okay, so maybe 15 miles an hour would be appropriate?
Yeah, because in this Goford scale that's in, in our packet, it's defined as fresh breeze, 19 to 24 miles an hour, flight poles tilt litter blowing along, along the ground, walking different, into a wind difficult, so
Oh, yeah.
Pop it back down to moderate breeze.
Which is the 13.
It's uncomfortable in the wind, which
Yeah.
some people are.
Moderate breeze.
Small trees sway, flags
Yeah.
lap vigorously.
Small children.
Probably just where they're fluttering.
Small children.
Yeah.
So where do you want to drop back to?
Well, 15 is right in the middle between 13 and 18.
Yeah.
Oh, don't give me this.
Just did the math.
Yeah, it's, it's the middle of
That's pretty
Go on 15, Nick. Is that what you're saying?
I would go with 15, that's fine.
Everybody good with 15?
Yeah, how about that? Right between 13 and 18, eh?
15.
Okay, yeah, so I can add that as a subsection E, must be removed when wind speeds exceed 15 miles per hour. And then for the must be properly secured to the ground using, I think, just keeping it simple, ground spikes or a weighted base, knowing that typically these things come with like prefabricated um, anchoring mechanisms.
If there's a threat of severe weather coming in the near timeframe, that they got to be out.
Um, I mean, yeah.
Common sense, but
Right. Must be removed when wind speeds exceed 15 miles per hour or anticipated severe
Now, that's going to be, that'd be pretty
I mean, if, I guess if a storm's coming in, it's going to be windy.
Yeah.
The winds are going to hit more than 15 miles an hour, and at that point, they'd have to remove them.
Storm advisories, yeah.
Yeah, so I think that
Storm advisories.
I think that maybe just doing the wind speed covers it.
Yeah.
I don't want to get into speculative kind of
No, you don't want to.
But I do like that point.
If it's raining real hard, then we got to take them down, how about that?
No longer than 60 days?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, after opening?
60 days is 69. There it is.
Is there a motion to accept this?
And that would be a motion to recommend this language for approval to city council, because we are at that point. We've had our public hearing. If you guys feel good about this, I'll get it together for city council.
Yeah.
Motion on the table.
No motion.
Motion by Bob, second.
There you go.
Roger?
Oh, I don't care.
All right.
Somebody else.
Motion by Bob, second by Roger. Any discussion? None, please take a roll.
Commissioner Slawinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Samanski?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Berto?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Chair Whitliff?
Yes.
Okay, another feather in your cap.
Yes, pun intended.
Another feather, yeah.
Outside, uh, your boss's door.
Is it feathered or just
A feathered flag.
They don't always.
Okay, uh, unclassified use determination, 24 Arthur Street.
Um, so this is actually, I have spoken with the property owner since our last month's meeting, and he is actually withdrawing this request at this time, but because you all tabled it um, to this meeting, I had to get it before you. I don't think any action is necessary at this time because he's withdrawing his request. But I did feel it was appro, most appropriate to bring it back before you because it was a table decision from last um, month's meeting. So no action needed, but wanted to make sure for the record, we have it on the agenda.
Okay.
This request has been withdrawn.
Any particular reason that it gave, or you just
Um, not necessarily. I think, yeah.
Rethink the situation.
Yeah, he, he kept things brief, so we'll stay tuned in the next month and see if he comes forward with more information.
Okay, yeah, not a problem.
Okay. Public comments, communication, anyone in the audience would like to, has a comment? What went on tonight or anything? Any interest? You have three to five minutes.
Three to five, that's how good we are.
None, okay. Staff reports, land use permit, business registration?
Yes. So we've been having discussions about keeping you guys a little, a little bit more informed with things that don't necessarily come before you, but definitely are things that, you know, you guys have a right to know about. So I put together for 2023, all the permits I've issued, and the screen doesn't allow me to flip on this Adobe um, application. But I put together all the business registrations and land use permits that I've issued in 2023. As you can see, um, things are kind of slow. I think that people are taking a step back and
Our right, or the arc is still let you turn it.
Well, this application
It should let you turn it.
It's not updated enough.
Oh, okay.
I know. I always, I would always go for that. Yeah, right. But yeah, the city needs to get the next version of Adobe or something. But yeah, you'll see a handful of dumpster um, permits there, a few new business registrations, mostly, you know, kind of basic stuff that's been coming through. Um, and then I'm realizing that special use permits aren't on here, but I'll get those on there as well. And then I wanted to ask if you guys would also like to see HGC and sign permits. It's not hard for me to put them all together if you guys want to see everything, um, but I wasn't sure if, if that is relevant to you.
What's the, uh, which is of the commission?
I'd like to see the sign.
Yeah.
Oh, I mean, if it wouldn't take
Yeah, yeah. For next month, I'll include everything that's been issued so far.
So we know which of us signs are supposed to be in compliance and what
Right.
aren't.
Mm-hmm.
That's true.
Yeah, but if you guys have any questions, um, I'm all ears. Otherwise, I will be providing this in your monthly packets going forward.
Thank you.
I've got a question if I could.
Uh huh.
In regards to what you have listed here, or maybe I shouldn't ask her, like what's codes, construction services?
Uh huh.
Is that something we should know?
Um, so that was approved administratively as a permitted use for a professional office. I talked to them, they're over at the old glass specialty shop. Um, so that was approved administratively as a permitted use for a professional office, I talked to them, they're over at the old glass specialty shop, and although it's kind of a contractor's facility in a sense, they're not really, like, they don't have a storage yard or anything like that yet, it's more so just like a place, an office where people can come in and get consultation and do paperwork and such, so at this time, they're under the permitted use of a professional office, but they did express that in the future, they may look to do some more like outdoor storage and things to that effect, that would push them into the contractor facility use, which is a special land use and would come before all of you, so...
I think at one time, they did have some glass in there for them to work from, at one time, years ago.
Okay.
Especially glass, though.
Yeah.
Yeah, Tim had a bunch.
Yeah, Tim had, Tim had all kinds of windows and stuff like that.
Right, and I think they're gonna have some materials and things, but it's not going to be a full-blown, um, like contractor facility from what he, yeah, more like a showroom, exactly.
And then one other one, honey, this Golden Stag, is that something new?
Um, yes, the Golden Stag is going to be occupying where the Fillmore is, currently, the old rest, the Fillmore Restaurant, no longer the Fillmore, it will be the Golden Stag.
Restaurant, okay, downtown.
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, now, see, if you wouldn't have put that out, we'd have read that in the paper and got all upset. Thank you very much.
Yes, so I'm gonna make sure you guys see this stuff.
Yeah, we appreciate it, though.
Yes.
Appreciate it.
Last, just questions.
Yeah, no, you say, this isn't busy, I think you're pretty active.
No, I mean, it seems that the actual construction-type projects, particularly residential, people have kinda taken a step back, I don't know. It just seems like this spring, and maybe I'm, I need to knock on wood and I'm speaking too soon, but even the driveway permits and things like that, that just seem to kinda roll in regularly, um, it seems like it's slowed down a little bit, so...
It's right now.
Right, that's the thing, yeah.
Materials are expensive.
Loans are relatively more expensive than they were a couple of years ago, so I think everyone's, yeah, taking a little bit of a step back.
Lots of work I got coming in.
You've had less work coming in as well?
I got more work coming in.
Oh, you have more work, okay.
I have site plan works I'm doing in out-county areas.
Okay.
So that's, everybody's going out, they're not...
Yeah, right.
They're spreading.
Uh-huh.
Moved basically from in the city part, they're moving outward.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Can, can I have...
I've got three sites I'm working on right now.
Building has been in, under, doing nothing or little bits forever, and then they had to renew permits and stuff, is that all?
That's all closed out, I know that that was in the courts with the city, and the Gordon and Rosmeyer properties have been, they have satisfied everything that the city was looking for, mm-hmm.
Yeah, no, uh, now you say this West Coast Construction, so if I wanted to build an addition, I would go in there and tell them I wanted to build an addition, they would help me, is that what you're saying?
Um, yeah, from, from what I understand, they have like financing assistance, they have, they'll do plans.
They're a contractor.
Uh-huh.
I think they, they've got one project going on now, I saw their trucks, their trucks someplace, I can't remember.
Yeah, I can't remember either.
They did some of the work on, uh, the hotel.
So then they have the, they have actually workers work for this company?
Mm-hmm.
And these peo, oh, okay.
They must.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, it's a good use for that building, it's always...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Originally a contractor's office.
Well, that's, it's hard to find somebody to do any work, if you go in there and say you want a bathroom installed, they would be able to help you.
Or call me.
Or call, yeah.
Yep.
I won't do it.
But no, that's a good idea, thank you.
Nancy, you have anything?
I do not.
Okay, Katie, that's all.
Um, I have just a couple other brief things that I wanted to mention to you guys, um, so another amendment, and maybe we could do a work session in the future on this, but I just kinda wanted to get it in your guys' eyes and, or in your ears, Shelley, you could probably speak to this, too, at the ZBA, um, there was kind of discussion about potentially amending the ordinance for parking requirements in the C-three, that it's required for hotels, but maybe incorporating something that, like exempting boutique hotels, less than ten rooms, um, something to that effect, so I can put together some tangible language and just kinda propose that to you guys next month and have something more to look at, but I just kinda wanted to mention that during staff notes to get you thinking about it, that that could be something we could look at, but also, Mark Miller had let me know that the DDA is getting a parking study done during their streetscape plan, so maybe that would be the most appropriate time to look at modifying parking requirements, but, yeah, I just kinda wanted to get that in your guys' minds, and, um, I'll put together something brief for next month to look at, and we can kind of discuss that in more detail as an agenda item.
Your study going, what is it in town?
I'm not entirely sure, he had briefly mentioned it to me that part of that streetscape plan will be a parking study, and I think they're generally just going to look at what exists, um, the probably like current uses and current impact, I don't know if they'll do some like parking counts or traffic counts or whatever downtown, um, but...
Citywide, though, it's only...
No, it's gonna be for the DDA, yeah, and with the boutique hotels, that amendment at the ZBA, that, that discussion was more so geared towards just downtown, since the hotels, everything is exempt from parking in downtown except for the hotels, motels, marinas, and condos.
Right.
Um, so, yeah, we can talk about that more, but just wanted to give a brief update on that, um, and then I do have some weekly updates from Bill, um, Smoke on the Water's planning on coming back again in July, on July twenty-ninth is when they wanna be here, um, I guess that event went really well last year, so they're, you know, welcoming it again this year.
Oh, really?
Um... Foghat is gonna be the headliner.
Who?
Well, for, oh, is it, this is Smoke on the Water.
Yeah, this one's Smoke on the Water.
It's, uh, Afro Man is gonna be the headliner.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
He came...
He's, he's one of the top five hip-hop.
Oh, no, I know Afro Man, he came to, he came to Northern, um, because NMU will do like a concert every year, that's why I chuckled, because it's just like Afro Man coming up north, over and over again, yeah, so that's cool.
Foghat is playing for Labor Fest.
Nice.
The real Foghat?
The real Foghat, yeah, it's not, not a tribute band.
Okay, should I put their walkers?
Yeah.
Fool for the city?
Yeah.
Nope.
Hey, yeah, hey.
And the fire department received twelve applications for the fire chief position, um, Chief Cameron was helping review those, I'm not sure, that was closer to the beginning of the month, so I'm not sure where they would be at with that one.
Nice.
Um, and then Bird Scooters will not be coming back this year, but I don't think it's at any fault of the city, it's more so that they cannot find reliable fleet managers, the company themselves, so they said maybe in the future, but at this point, um, they don't really have the capacity to facilitate Manistee, the Bird Scooters.
Oh, the Scooters?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought they were, but they're not now.
No.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
No, they're all over town, so...
And then the DNR trust fund grant, that went to council on the twenty-first, and council did vote to submit that application due April first, requires a fifty percent match, but the city's hopeful that we'll get something for that DNR, um, trust fund grant for the North River Walk, so those are just a few updates, oh, and then the last thing, I have been reviewing RRC, and there's this like training strategy, strategy, um, in there, and part of that is amending the bylaws to include like training as a standing agenda item, so I think I'm gonna bring, um, proposed bylaw amendments to you guys next month, even though, you know, it's not organizational meeting, but at this time of the year, I just feel like it's something that I could get done, and then we can let RRC know that we're utilizing the training tracker, so, and that is all I have for you guys.
Thank you. Member discussion, Roger?
Yeah, well, I'm sure right back at you, Katie, as far as what the, uh, Gateway Project and the south side of the River Street, are they just putting dirt down to grow grass?
For now, yeah.
Okay.
So that the fencing can be removed, just pull the permit for that.
Really? The, the intent is to remove the fencing?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Oh, my goodness, well, there you go. No, and then, of course, the hospital's still sitting empty, I sure, I, I don't, Miller's, but...
Yeah, I haven't heard anything on that one in a while, but I...
Guy in the paper tonight, sitting, no place to go, he's living in a tent, the homeless guy.
Yeah.
And there's a building sitting there.
I did see the headlines of that article.
Gee, that don't make sense to me, nothing, I'm good, thanks, Martha.
You're welcome, Roger. Marlene?
Nothing.
Shelley?
No.
Bob? Hmm, just, uh, I'm getting some things, little odds and ends coming in from developers for parcels, but, uh, it's still to be kept well under wraps, so they see where they're going, everybody. So some, and stuff, stuff's, 'cause I've been telling them when I get this idea they're doing, there's the office contact. Could be something coming.
There will be.
Yeah, it's just time, timing.
Nick? Uh, just, you know, you mentioned, uh, about Chief Cameron, his retirement is gonna be on the twenty-fifth, I think, at noon or one o'clock at the fire station.
Did they find someone else to replace him?
Well, he, he and the chief from Traverse City were reviewing and making recommendations to the city. Eleven?
Yeah. Yeah.
Eleven o'clock.
Traverse City's used a very...
Happy Easter, everyone.
Oh, yeah, same to you. Same to you and your...
You know what one Easter egg said to the other?
Oh, my God.
Know any good yokes?
Dad jokes.
Pam?
I'm not gonna miss the Bird Scooters at all.
No.
I'm so tired of them in my yard.
Or in my yard.
Yeah, honestly, I live on the north side, and they would get, it's like people would drive them till they were dead.
And then they stay there for days.
And that was the issue, they didn't, I think that was the whole thing, is they didn't have reliable, what they call fleet managers, and I don't know if they find those locally, I mean, I'd imagine that you'd have to find local people that are willing to do it.
Never saw anybody pick them up, they were constantly out there.
Right.
What would, what would they do then, with the, like you say, sitting in your front yard, somebody would pick them up in a trunk?
Yeah.
And then charge them up? Somebody would use them again.
They had, they had the, they had solar panels on them.
Oh, 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 I see them scattered around.
They had some kind of, um...
DPS on them.
That they knew where they were, they could track.
Oh, I see, okay.
That there's trackers on them, they knew exactly where everyone was.
Oh, okay. That's, well, that one on First Street Beach there, if you're just talking, he, he's got some big ideas that, that, uh, where they're selling confire popcorn and margaritas and stuff, taking over that, or that stand. Yeah, they're talking about putting paddle boards, renting paddle boards at home.
I don't know where he's gonna get that, uh, margarita license from.
Yeah, I know, I see.
For license either, but...
Yeah, he doesn't qualify as a resort, he's not gonna get a resort license, and the state isn't gonna...
I don't think so.
He used the licenses he had on Mackinac Island, he runs five businesses on Mackinac.
I, I get it, but...
That's where he's got used to, he got that mindset, that's where he's got to adjust it.
But I don't think that there's a, the only license I know that isn't being used right now is Mr. Armors, uh, that he bought from Bill, and I don't know that he, uh, he willing to transfer it, I don't think he...
That one's, uh, sitting dormant for a couple of years.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's true.
But it does have barbecue there, though.
Yeah, yeah, the barbecue is a specialty, wasn't it?
Uh, the only thing I have, Katie, is, um, this month, I think we were, we were supposed to tour the hotel.
Um, yeah, sometime in April, I will contact Tom first thing, um, next week and follow up on actual dates with him. Yeah.
That'll just be for us.
Ken wanted to push one oh oh nine Manistee Street up a little bit, I'll follow up with Ken as well, because we were supposed to do that in March, and he said he wanted another three weeks-ish, so I think we're approaching that timeframe as well.
Tour the hotel, we're gonna go.
So, yeah, I will get some actual dates set for you guys in the coming weeks.
Hotel, we will be going in different groups, not as a whole.
Correct, yep, I'll get like, I'll probably do maybe like three timeframes again, and I'm sure Tom will be okay with it, I'll double check with him, but I'll open that up to council as well, I know that most, I'm pretty sure almost all of council, if not everyone, participated last time, so I'm sure they would be, um, happy to come too, and we'll just get like three dates and make sure not more than half of each of the boards go.
Three of each ours or theirs.
Right, okay, oh, four is a quorum for each of you.
Correct.
Okay, yeah, so we'll make sure we get the...
Please, three city, go on again.
Yeah, you can do that, yeah, three, or three city or three planning. Are they still talking about May, end of May?
Um, I have not directly spoken with them as of recent, but...
Rumor, was it?
There was several people that, that worked there, and so I'll take this as a grain of salt, um, they were initially planning a soft opening before Memorial Day, but they're having staffing challenges like everybody else, and now they're looking into June.
Okay, yeah, I heard like first week of June.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I heard.
That would be on that.
Yeah.
It's gonna be at my birthday.
Yeah, I mean, where are they gonna get the people?
It'll be around the fourth of July.
Gee, yeah, yeah, they won't be able, like Bigby's, they'll be sitting there with empty, nobody to work it.
All right, well, it is eight twenty-three, um, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Shelley. Again. You need a adjourn.